Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carey, would you call the roll?
Yes ma'am, Mr. Bosno.
Here.
Mr. Krasinski.
Here.
Ms. Nevers.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Goodhue.
Here.
Clerk Posey has to be excused, Madam Chairman. Supervisor Dunn?
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Chairman.
On the approval of the agenda, we have one deletion, correct?
That's correct. We do have item number eight. Request to advance an employee has been removed at the direction of the Personnel Director. And Madam Chairman, if I may, on the last page of the agenda, you will note that the Board comments, the order in which the Board members speak has been changed. And that's primarily due to some new software that's been purchased by the Clerk's Department.
Okay, thank you. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, if I may, if it comes to any type of a roll call, not to call Ms. Posey's name.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to refrain from calling Ms. Posey's name for roll call votes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And we will ask for any other additions or deletions to the agenda.
Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Mr. Krasinski, to approve the amended agenda.
Bosno.
Mr. Bosno, sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Approval of the bills, as usual, there are two bill runs. If anyone wishes to remove an article on the bill run, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, if there are no issues with either bill run, I move that we approve both.
Motion by Ms. Nevers.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Smith to authorize payment of both bill runs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The approval of the previous meeting minutes, and those being from February 27th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the previous meeting minutes from February 27th as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the minutes from February 27th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And we also have the closed session minutes to approve.
I will also make a motion that we approve those as presented.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Mr. Bosno, to approve the closed session minutes from February 27th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda items. These are routine matters that frequently come before the Board. If anyone wishes to discuss an item on the consent, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the consent agenda items. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Public comments. This part of the public comments is for agenda items only. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please come to the podium, state your name. Remember, there is a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, Mark Graybo. Address is on file with the Clerk's Office. Here to talk about item number seven this evening. Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Acquisition Grant Application for Public Hearing. Unless I'm wrong, we have found out that this is actually being used to purchase forty acre parcel on Twenty-Six Mile Road that was actually up at an auction sale. If this is true, and you plan on utilizing this for additional properties that the township is going to own, and turn into a park, or turn into whatever, I highly recommend that you reconsider this. This township owns enough property as it is. You have enough property within the township to acquire the items that you already have. You've got property on Twenty-Four Mile Road that you need to sell. That property needs to go. You have plenty of property on Twenty-Four Mile Road to acquire, or maintain, and take care of anything you'd like to do. If there's truth behind this, and that you're taking forty acres out of the New Haven School District for their potential income valuation down the road, that's a detriment to that district. And this Board should be ashamed of itself for looking at it that way. You need to maintain the items and the property you have. We have a beautiful parcel over here that's been kept quiet and hidden for years. Let's open it up, let's clean up the pond, and let's make it like Shelby, and let's generate revenue back into this township, instead of you guys consistently generating revenue out of the township. Think about what you're doing. Those federal tax dollars are also our money, as residents, that you're utilizing. Thank you.
Good evening, Tom Solkell. And my address is on file with the Clerk's Office. I also wanted to speak on item number seven. I concur that it's important that we optimize, maximize, and take care of the existing properties that we have. I think that's important. And if there's cleaning up we have to do, we should definitely make that a priority. At the same time, I went on the SEMCOG website today, and I looked at our county, and I filtered it by public parks. And one of the things I did notice is that, proportionately speaking, we don't really have the number of parks that other like-size municipalities in our county have. If you look at anywhere in the surrounding area, it's almost embarrassing how many parks that we have compared to other municipalities. So if we're looking at, and some other feedback that we hear from residents a lot is, "How could we not preserve some of the beautiful landscape that we have?" And fortunately, or unfortunately, some of the nicest landscape we have is in the northeastern part of our township. But I welcome the purchase of any property for additional parks. I think we need more parks. I think most residents with young families would give you feedback that they want more parks. They would welcome a nature preserve versus going to Sterling Heights. So I think it's a great idea for our township. And like I said, I'd recommend the residents to go on the SEMCOG website. They can filter by public parks, and you will see that it is disproportionate, the amount of parks we have in our township. So, thank you. Good evening.
Power of Jury, address is on file in the Clerk's Office. Item number seven on the thing. I'd rather see a nature preserve for number seven than another subdivision. Our roads can't handle another subdivisions. Our school systems can't handle another subdivision going in. But if we're going to build a park, why don't we take a drive down to Girl's Point and see what their parks are like? True, they got the water and the boats, and it looks a lot nicer. But boy, I'll tell you, they got a huge picnic area, they got an outdoor swimming pool. You can invite friends and families over there for the weekends, have picnics in there. They do outside concerts in there, the fireworks displays are held in their parks. If we're going to do a park, go out and do a park. Don't put a park with just a few little swings and toys for children to play in, or some nature trails to do a hike. Or the park on Twenty-One Mile Road that's half the time flooded, and you can't even use it, and the gates are closed, you can't even get into it. You're going to do a park, build a park where everybody in the township can use it. And make it a nice-looking park. Just a nature trail, I'd rather see that than a subdivision. But other than that, just to buy it and leave it a nature trail, I'm not sure that's a wise investment of the dollars neither. Thank you.
Anyone else? Agenda item only. Very well, then, we will move on to the public hearing. And this is the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund, 2019 Acquisition Grant Application Public Hearing. I will open the public hearing, it is 7:10. I'll call on Mr. Maher to guide us through this.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor and members of the Board. As part of the grant application, we're required to have a public hearing to encourage any type of input we can from our residents. And in this particular case, we're looking at the purchase of two abutting pieces of property for use as a nature park. The nature park would be primarily for walking pathways and enjoying wooded environment and animals in the natural habitat. The parcels in question, I've listed the two parcel numbers. They are roughly thirty acres for the larger piece, and ten acres for the smaller piece. And for a total of, again, roughly forty acres. The site's currently occupied by five buildings. It has an arena stable/office building that's roughly seventeen thousand two hundred square feet. Has a fourteen hundred and forty square foot pole barn, and three sheds all around the two hundred square foot range. There's two ponds on the site, an open area near the front of the site where family picnic and gatherings can occur. It's a forested piece of property, currently with over a mile of pathways throughout the site. This is the property in question, an aerial. And again, you'll see, you've got the ten-acre piece on the west side, and you've got the thirty-acre piece on the east side. And... If successful with the grant, the grant would end up paying seventy-five percent of the cost of the property. The property value right now is roughly 1.2 million, based on previous appraisal. The grant request, if in fact, this becomes the number of the purchase, would be, again, roughly nine hundred thousand, leaving the township cost at about three hundred thousand, plus any closing and processing or holding fees. We'd estimate somewhere around fifty thousand for that type of cost. The structure of the deal, currently we're working with a conservancy group who is willing to purchase the property. If once purchased by the conservancy, the township would then utilize the grant to purchase the property from the conservancy. If the grant is unsuccessful, the township would still have to purchase the property at the appraised value at that point in time. With that, Madam Chair, we'll take any questions and comments you might have, and go to the public.
Any questions from the Board? Are anyone in the audience, this is a public hearing. Please.
Hi there, Jay Lampke, 467-59 Millpoint. When you brought up the picture, I didn't see the ponds, approximately, what size are they? And that's about it.
They look roughly small, one-acre ponds.
Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Kathy Western. As you discussed this item tonight, could you explain a little more about that last slide? And could you bring that up again, the part about even if we do not get the grant, we would still have to purchase the property at 1.2 million dollars? And if I'm misunderstanding that, maybe you could enlighten me during your discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, again, of course, we'd like to get the grant, we're hoping to get the grant. There's no absolute guarantee we'll get the grant. The, if the property is agreed at the appraised price, and the appraised price comes in where it has in the past, roughly 1.2 million dollars, if the grant application is unsuccessful, the township will be obligated to still purchase the property from the conservancy, since they will have assumed ownership of it.
Would you go into the, where the county, Mr. Santoro, got involved in this?
Yeah, the property itself, both SEMCOG and the county are targeting these particular areas for their green and blue way programs. So in both cases, both SEMCOG and the county have... Actually, I think SEMCOG put together their letter of support for us already. The county has indicated that they will prepare that letter, but we haven't got that yet from Mr. Santoro, who is head of the Environmental Division, I believe, for county planning.
Thank you, Patrick. Anyone else?
Mark Graybo, I would just like clarification. The 1.2 million that we are now on the hook for, one way or the other, is going to be utilized to purchase forty acres of property. Instead of us utilizing these funds to actually take care of the properties we currently own, which is ninety-plus acres on Twenty-Four Mile Road, and another forty-plus acres on Twenty-Four Mile Road that should have been sold, or never been really kept. The plan was to sell that. So we're going to continue to acquire these properties and take them off the tax rolls, when we should utilize this 1.2 million towards the development of the ninety acres that we own and are responsible for. You're just continuing to acquire land?
Well, yeah, I mean, to answer the question, obviously, we hope to get the grant, and, you know, keep the price somewhere around that three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, obviously, if we don't get the grant, yeah, we are on the line for roughly the 1.2, or whatever that appraisal comes in at. Now, you know, that's a decision that the Board will be making as part of this public hearing, and next meeting as part of a resolution, whether to proceed with the grant or not.
All right. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Maher.
Paul Carey, why are we taking a 1.2 million dollar gamble on a nature trail? Do we really need a 1.2 million dollar nature trail in this township? If we had the part "grant guaranteed," kind of a different story. But without the guarantee of the grant, 1.2 million, think about it.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Supervisor. Frank Kruzmano, 16188 Jenny Drive. The question that always comes to mind whenever I'm hearing the acquisition of some property or land, and I'll shout out to Roger Krasinski regarding the streetlight issue. What are the long-term costs? Okay, there's going to be costs of improvement. Are those going to be examined and discussed? What are the costs of maintenance? What other costs are going to be associated with this, that, you know, how are they going to be paid? Are they going to be put on the general burden on the taxpayers in McComb Township? Or is there going to be some user fee? I hope these questions are asked. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Maher, one more question for you, if you don't mind. If by chance we were not to receive the grant, we can turn around and resell the property for the appraised price? Is that correct?
Yes, it would be a market sale, so we can certainly resell the property.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just had one question for him. I'm in support of this perk and others, so I'm just asking this question just because of something that came up. The question came up, grants for current property we own. Would that current property qualify for this grant, or not? Or does this piece of property meet some qualifications, or other property that we have doesn't meet? Do you understand the question?
Yes, yeah, and there's a couple different answers. The, this particular piece of property should score high in terms of the grant program, based on the point system offered from the State Department of Natural Resources. So this particular process, or park is good for acquisition, or this property is good for acquisition grants. Now, the other side of the grant program is a development grant, which, you know, could be utilized for improving the other pieces of property we do have. So, you know, certainly, we're going to look into those as well as, you know, the grant seasons progress. The, those also have point systems as well. However, most of the, most of the points for development grants center around a lot of this nature preserves, opening up a natural environment to residents that may not otherwise have that access. So even when we do the development grants, we tend to get higher point system, or higher point scores through the DNR if it's revolving around natural features and pathways.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Janet, could you come back up, or, no, is that closed?
Yes.
Janet made a comment, Janet made a comment to you that we could resell this property if the grant wasn't approved, I guess is the correct word. At that point in time, I don't know of any laws, and I may be wrong on this, I'm not positive, but right now, the, I'm assuming that property is zoned agriculture or farmland, so a subdivision couldn't go in there. If we had to resell that property, because we didn't get the grant, most likely, a developer would come in and buy that, and only buy it if we changed the zoning of it to residential, commercial, industrial, whatever he wanted to put in there. So it's still a gamble that you're taking to even resell that land, because you're probably going to have to change the zoning at that point in time. I may be wrong on that, I don't know, but just my thought.
Mr. Maher, is that property currently zoned, or master-planned for residential at some point in the future?
It is.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very well, I'll close the public hearing. It is 7:23. Being that this was just a public hearing, there is going to be no action tonight. The Clerk's Office will prepare the resolution to submit the grant application, if that's agreeable to the township Board. So we would need a motion to prepare the resolution per the application guidelines.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Bosno. To move forward with this and prepare the resolution and apply for the grant. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Under old business, that item has been removed from the agenda, so we will move on then to new business. And this is from the Planning Department. Request to approve the preliminary plan for Rockwood Park Site Condominiums. Mr. Maher.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor and members of the Board. This item came before the Planning Commission, and this is the piece immediately east of Waldenberg Park. And it does meet the ordinance requirements at this time, both the zoning ordinance, as well as the land division ordinance. The Planning Commission is recommending approval of it.
Thank you.
And it's for preliminary site condo, excuse me.
Thanks. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and motion to approve the preliminary plan, Rockwood Park's Site Condominiums, permanent parcel number 0828376002, located on north side of Twenty-One Mile, quarter-mile east of Romeo-Plank Road.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Number 10 is the Clinton-McComb Public Library North Branch Revised Preliminary Site Plan Approval. Mr. Maher.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor and members of the Board. This came before the Board a couple months ago, I believe, and the Clinton-McComb Library North Branch was requesting approval, or preliminary approval of their site plan. You did grant the approval, and after some continued work, they found out that the Department of Roads was not satisfied with the arrangement for the southern Ingress and Egress Drives. If you'll notice on the drawings in front of you, basically, what they asked for was either to combine those access drives, or evidently to grant a greater separation between the two. The library district has proposed a greater separation between the two drives. And at this point in time, this was in front of our Town Center Committee. The Town Center Committee recommended approval of the amendment to the preliminary plan, subject to the applicant working with the fire department to devise an acceptable design for the south Ingress and Egress Drives. And it has more to do with the turning radius and so forth, to make sure they can get trucks in and out of there adequately. Also, subject to clarifying the drive dimensions, there was some concern over the actual dimensioned width and a dimension, or I'm sorry, the actual width that you could scale off the drawing, and a dimension that was on the drawing. And then removing the limit of work line, which basically indicates where the library will disturb ground and entertain their project.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the Board?
Madam Chair, are you looking for a motion to go ahead and proceed with this, as the recommendations that are up there?
With the caveat that the petitioner get with the fire chief about the turning radius for the trucks.
I will move on that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the preliminary site plan, provided that they reconfigure the turning radius to satisfy the fire department. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And if I could have Mr. Lutito come up for one minute? Mr. Lutito is the President of the Library Board, and I have in my hand the deed to the property. Thank you.
Thanks.
Nice to see you again. Thank you very much. And we will now move on to the Engineering Department. And this is a request to approve Pay Estimate #4 for the Twenty-One Mile Pedestrian Bridges. Mr. Dan Tifflin.
Yes ma'am, Chairperson, members of the Board. This is payment certificate number four for pedestrian bridges, which were basically completed last fall. There's some restoration work that's still required out there. The payment certificate is in the amount of $1,200, and we're recommending approval to Z Contractors. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a move on this one. I'll make a motion on this one. I'll make a motion on this one to approve pay estimate number four.
Motion by Mr. Krasminski.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Bosino to approve the pay estimate for the pedestrian bridges. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. And we have another pathway gap closure. This is to award the contract for the 2019 Pathway Gap Closure Program to Italia Construction. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, ma'am, chairperson, members of the board. On February 11th, here at Town Hall, we opened bids for the next phase of our Pathway Gap Closure Program. Italia Construction was the low bidder at $524,384.20. We've reviewed the bid that came in. It all seems to be in order. We also had a meeting with the contractor to make sure that they understood what was required, deadlines, specifications, you know, those types of things. And we're satisfied that they're going to be able to complete the work as we've designed. So we are recommending that we award, the Township Board awards the project to Italia Construction the amount of $524,384.20. Be happy to answer any questions.
I just have one. Are they going to start on this immediately?
The, we haven't had a pre-construction meeting yet, but when we met with them a few weeks ago, they indicated to us it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of Memorial Day, probably the first of June, just after Memorial Day.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, hearing, I would go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and to award the contract to Italia Construction the amount of $524,384.20.
Motion by Mr. Krasminski. Support. Supported by Ms. Nevers to award the contract for the 2019 Pathway Gap Closure Program to Italia Construction. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have a request to approve the sanitary sewer connection for the 2017 Pathway Gap Closure. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, ma'am, chairperson, members of the board. Although this is 2017, it's really this construction years project, so the project that you just awarded, we have a couple of septic fields, this item and the next item on the agenda, where the pathway coincides with the existing septic field that is in front of the house. Being that we couldn't realign the sidewalk, we asked the Water and Sewer Department to give us some prices for connecting the property to our sanitary sewer system along 22-Mile Road. They have contacted three bidders to actually do the underground work to make the physical connection. XL Excavating Construction is the low bidder at $5,200. Additionally, there is some restoration work that's going to have to happen out there. We have to basically re-landscape the front yard after they're done. The company that does this type of work for the township, basically over and above what they can handle in-house is Heritage Oaks Landscaping. They've given the Water and Sewer Department a price for $2,150 to do that work. Additionally, there are tap fees that are owed to the Water and Sewer Department for this connection, so essentially it's a transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Water and Sewer Fund to reimburse water and sewer for the pipe and, you know, inspection fees and whatnot. And that is $7,390 for a grand total for everything of $14,740. And I'm asking permission from the Township Board to have the Water and Sewer Department arrange for this work to be done. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair, if there's no further discussion, I would move, make a motion to approve the sanitary sewer connection for the 2018 pathway, right?
2019. It says 2017, so let's stick with what's on the agenda.
Okay, on 2017, the amount of $14,740, and have the, our elite sewer, Water and Sewer Department start on it.
Motion by Mr. Krasminski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the sanitary sewer connection as discussed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The next one is similar. This is to approve the sanitary sewer connection, I believe it's to the neighbors, and this is for the Pathway Gap Closure Program also. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, ma'am, chairperson, members of the board. This is the property next door to the one that we've just dealt with. The prices are a little bit different, but the situation is exactly the same. Water and Sewer Department contacted the three, same three contractors to provide prices for the physical connection. For this particular parcel, it's $4,500 for the connection, and then for the landscaping, the price that they obtained from Heritage Oaks is $2,750. And then the connection fee due to the Water and Sewer Department is $7,390 for a grand total of $14,640. Recommending approval since this is work that we need to do in order to get our pathways in. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, if there's no discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion on to continue the Pathway Gap Closure Program on this particular property in the amount of $14,640.
Motion by Mr. Krasminski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the sanitary sewer connection as discussed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And we will move on now to the Finance Department. And this is a request to approve budget amendment resolution for the General Fund and the Fire Operating Fund. Ms. Smith.
Good evening. Before you tonight, as Ms. Dunn said, you have a request to do two budget amendments, one being to the General Fund and the other to the Fire Operating Fund. The General Fund expenditures need to increase from $21,116,504 to $22,239,119. And this increase is due to the increase in debt payments attributable to the 2018 Public Safety Bond that the board approved last October, and for the General Fund to assume the payments on the Parker Rec 2012 bond payment, or bond. The Fire Operating Fund expenditure needs to be increased from $6,714,312 to $6,914,392. This also is attributable to the 2018 Public Safety Bond from last October. So with that, it needs to be done by board resolution, which should be attached in your board packet, and available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, Madam Chair, since this is an item that we need to do all the time. Thank you, Stacy. I would start with the first one of the General Fund, to increase it from $21,116,504 to
Can we do them both together?
It's all in one resolution.
You want to do it on one?
Yes.
Okay. Then the other one would be also on the Fire Operating Fund, increasing it from $6,714,312 to $6,914,392.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Krasminski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to amend the budget as presented. Mr. Carey, would you call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Krasminski?
Yes.
Ms. Nevers?
Yes.
Mr. Bosino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Goodhue?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes. This resolution is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
And the next item is from the Human Resources Department, and this is to authorize Human Resources to initiate the recruitment process for a utility worker in Water and Sewer Department. Mr. Sorry.
Madam Chair and members of the board, the Water and Sewer Department had a retirement as of February 28, 2019. That position is covered under the collective bargaining agreement with the Michigan Association of Public Employees. The Water and Sewer Superintendent has requested that the Human Resources Department initiate the recruitment process for a utility worker, and the first process of that would be to post for the position under the terms of the agreement with the Michigan Association of Public Employees. So with that, I'm asking for a motion to authorize Human Resources to initiate the recruitment process for a utility worker.
Thank you. This is to fill over retirement, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I will make the motion that we start the recruitment process for the utility worker.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to authorize Human Resources to initiate the recruitment process for a utility worker. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have public comments, and this is on non-agenda items. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name. Remember, you have a three-minute time limit.
I'm chairperson, board members, my name is Keith Reaume, 21361 Clayton Drive. We have a situation over on Clayton Drive.
Keith, if I may, would you say your name again?
Yes, Keith Reaume, R-E-A-U-M-E.
Thank you.
Actually, I may have a cold, so I apologize. We have a little situation on Clayton Drive, we need your help. Imagine we have a vacant bank-owned property next to us that's for sale, bank fixed it up, and looking forward to a new neighbor. Unfortunately, Sunday, our new neighbors came in the form of squatters that have moved into this property. The listing agent was called, police were called. Unfortunately, they had a fake lease agreement that they said was got on Craigslist, which everyone knows it's a farce. Unfortunately, these squatters know what they're doing. So I'm not sure if the board can do anything. The property has not received its CBO yet from the Building Department, so I'm asking and petitioning the power of the board from McComb Township to step in and see what you can do to eliminate this unsafe environment for our neighborhood children. Any questions at all?
We will talk with the building director tomorrow.
Okay, really appreciate it. Yeah, obviously, as you can imagine, the residents, there's only a few of us that can get here tonight, we're kind of in a panic.
Keith, if I may, Madam Chair, if I may, what is, do you have the address to that property?
Yeah, the address is 21377 Clayton, C-L-A-Y-T-O-N.
C-L-Y.
C-L-A-Y.
A-Y, T-O-N?
T-O-N, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Property is a Fannie Mae-owned property. The agent was out there as well as the police officers. Unfortunately, McComb County Sheriff, I would hope that they would have seen it as a larceny by conversion in terms of, and stopped the process because they had the moving trucks there, and of course, you know, wonderful people moving in, and it was a pretty scary situation, and unfortunately, they said, well, there's a lease agreement, we have to let them move in and then have it turn into a civil matter, which I just certainly didn't understand. You think that somebody cannot just take property, move in, hang pictures on the wall, and claim it for their own in good old McComb Township here, so anything you can do, appreciate it.
If you could wait until after the meeting and I can get your telephone number? Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Andrea Yipe, my address is on file with the clerk's office. I'm also a resident on Clayton Drive, and the address in question is 21377 in McComb Township, and it's in Cornerstone Village subdivision. My question to you is how does this happen and how can we avoid it in the future? We, as a subdivision, have lots of young children, we're fearing for the safety of our families, our home and the surrounding areas. They are not paying for their home, they have not bought it. What is going to happen to them? How soon will they be asked to leave? Is there illegal activity happening in the home? Are there children in the home without water or electricity? How did they get in and can they be forced to leave? Will the township pose a fine on Fannie Mae for having occupancy in the home without a certificate? There are several homes in our sub that are for sale, so if anyone wants to break in the lockbox and move in, they can't be forced to move out, is that the law? How many homes in McComb Township are being used by squatters right now? I've been a resident in McComb for over 11 years, and I want to know what is going to be done to rectify this issue for the safety of my family and home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Tom Sokol. On a similar subject, I wanted to talk to the board to see if we could come up with some ways to kind of keep up with technology, and what I'm referring to is a new online service called Airbnb. I believe it stands for Airbed and Breakfast. And what's happening in our township is that it's becoming quite popular. There's over 10 houses right now, and they're basically used as hotels. So people who own a primary dwelling in a traditional subdivision could use one bedroom in their house and rent it out like a hotel. And you could imagine sheriffs have been called out in Manner Place subdivision where I live several times just because of, you know, rowdiness and noises off hours and so on, but I don't think the expectation or the spirit of when people are buying a house in McComb Township in a traditional subdivision is that they're going to be living next to a hotel. I think that's a reasonable expectation. I know the city of Detroit has an ordinance against Airbnb. I know in Royal Oak recently, there was a large drug bust at an Airbnb. I mean, you could come up with all creative ways that people could come in, come out, stay for a night, leave, rent it for a few days, store drugs and move forward, so I don't expect us to have known about a plan a year ago on how to address this, but it's something new, it's something that's growing. We got over 10 properties right now, if you go on the website, and I would ask the board to take a look at this and maybe come up with some ways that we could curtail it. Another thing I wanted to bring up is just the issues that these residents brought up around the squatting. I appreciate your follow-up on that. I appreciate your follow-up on the Airbnb. If there's anything we could do, I think, to let the residents know when these types of things get addressed, I think sometimes the board does a good job of following up on these types of things. I know Mrs. Nevers has followed up on some things for me, Clerk Posey has, Mr. Bosino, I'm sure the entire board follows up on some of these issues that come up at these board meetings when residents bring them up. I think we could be a little bit more consistent in letting the community know when some of these things get addressed, because I think they're important. I think a lot of things that residents bring forward at this meeting resonate with the rest of the community, so any type of follow-up we could do to let the residents know that we've addressed these issues, I think would be welcome, so thank you very much for your time today.
Anyone else? Very well, we will move on then to trustees' comments.
Yes, Madam Chair, I just want to thank everybody who spoke at the microphone tonight during either comments or the public hearing. Stay involved. I kind of liked, you know, the tone, even when we raised some tough questions tonight, I kind of liked the tone of the meeting tonight. I want to address the squatter situation real quick. This is something that just started Sunday, I believe. I just found out about it yesterday. I met with residents in the hallway, and I definitely got to take care of baseball moms, and she knows what I'm talking about with that one. But I am not going to claim to be an expert on squatters, and how ordinance plays into that, but I can tell you I'm going to become an expert, and I think, I'm confident that you're going to find other experts up here. That's something we do not want in our community. This Airbnb too is completely something that I found out recently about two, about two weeks ago. I didn't know that was out there. I've seen other communities have made ordinances, I didn't realize Detroit had, because I had seen an Airbnb, some of these houses get rented out, and then drug dealers are using the address to get, they're not using their real name, and in some communities, they're sending drugs to that home, and now that becomes a drug house through Airbnb. So these are, I think Mr. Sokol articulated it correctly when he says this is an emerging issue, both the squatting issue and the Airbnb, I think, like I said, I can assure you, some of us are going to become experts on this real quick, so.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would just like to thank our financial director, Stacy, for handling our reservations and all of the things that you do for us so that we may go to MTA. Thank you again, and for the packet.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I've got a couple of items. First of all, I'd like to give a shout-out to the New Haven School senior, Romeo Weeks. I'm being named Hail Schramms Mr. Basketball Award winner. I believe it's the first- I believe it's the first for McComb County. Also, Karen, weren't you a member of that New Haven school bar? I thought you were. Also, Madam Chair, I'd like to compliment you on your presentation on Friday at the State of the Township address. The crystal ball was awesome. You always amazed me on what theme we are going to be looking at. How can you take an address as such and make it interesting? Using of emojis to explain certain situations. The best term, I guess, was the one authored by the Assistant Superintendent Ed English Major Konig. His creation of the term "slight indentation in the earth" was creative. Three, Pat. As far as this B&B, we'll be looking at that. I know there's got to be something in the ordinances, and I know you'll be looking at it tomorrow and then talking to Joe about this. Correct?
That's correct. We've been addressing the situation with the B&Bs. I think our ordinance is probably strong enough right now, so when we get compliance, we've been acting on them.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Smith? No? Okay. Then we'll move to treasurer's comments.
Yes. I would also like to compliment Mrs. Dunn on the State of the Township address on Friday. I know she puts her heart and soul into it and does a lot of research and puts together usually a very good presentation. None of us know what's going to happen. She does have that theme. She keeps it pretty quiet. I'm always amazed how she can show up at a banquet hall with a little USB drive and stick it in on somebody else's equipment and make it work. I don't know how she's not nervous. I would be, but she's always very calm. And in her township addresses, she always makes sure that she shows her pride in McComb Township. And it's very important to everybody that I think we all have that pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the kind remarks. Mr. Carey, is there anything?
Yes ma'am, there is a couple of things that Clerk Posey asked me to mention. I think at the last board meeting, she mentioned there's a May 7 special election in the New Haven School District. And this past week, we mailed out roughly 1,800 absentee ballot applications to our list of permanent AV voters. And those are coming in little by little now. She also wanted me to tell you that there's a recent change in the election law, which allows any registered voter to vote by absentee ballot without providing a statutory reason, which is what has been required in the past. So she'd like to encourage those people that are eligible to apply for absentee ballots, because it cuts down on our lines at the polls. So for 2020, this would be a tremendous thing, because with the presidential election, that is our biggest turnout of any election season that we have. So she'd like to let the people know about that change. And if they have that desire to vote by absentee, they simply have to call our office, and we'll make sure that they get an application. And that's all we have.
Thank you. Supervisor's comments. I also wanted to congratulate Mr. Romeo Weems from New Haven High School. Roger stole my thunder, but that's okay.
Didn't know.
The other thing that I want to remind you is that on March 28, at 7:30 PM, turn your TV to Channel 4 and watch Sarah Vanoyen on Jeopardy. Sarah is a librarian at Clinton McComb Public Library. And just a short note is that at lunchtime, the employees play Jeopardy. And Sarah always has the correct answer. So congratulations to Sarah and good luck on March 28. That's all I have, and that concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Mr. Busino, to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay.